Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. This is February 22, 2022. I'm grateful that so many of you could join us this evening. As is typical, we start off our night with an invocation followed by the pledge. And if you are willing and able, please join me as we have a moment of silence in place of our invocation this evening. Thank you. Thank you. We will now have our pledge, which will be brought by Engineer Rich Ferguson of Station 14B shift, and he has been with Cobb County since 1996, since our Olympics. He will also be joined tonight by Troop 795. And our troop can just stand along the front here. And you will turn this way because our flag is over here. Wonderful. And Mr. Ferguson, you can start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Commissioner Richardson, can you tell us a little bit about this truth that's here with us tonight?
Sure. Give me one moment. So we have with us Troop 795 with Mount Zion Methodist Church with David Galt. And I didn't know if, David, you kind of left really quickly. I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that?
Yes.
Just be to the podium.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
We're so honored to be here tonight, and we were just here to listen and observe. And we've got some future leaders here that are taking notes. Thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely. I had the joy of speaking with them upstairs, and they all know so much about leadership. They could teach us, our whole community, so much.
Our future is bright indeed. With that, I do have some opening remarks before we begin today. First, I want to wish everyone a happy Tuesday. And this is a special day in our history and decade because it is Tuesday, February 2nd, 2022, but you can write the date 2/2/22. And while I had thought today was a great day of alignment with the day being with all twos, a member of my family told me that it could also be a crappy day because of the twos. So take it for having youth in the family. But life is certainly about perspective, and I am an optimist. So we will pray that today is a great day of alignment within our community. Before we head into today's meeting, I did want to provide some clarity on a matter which a number may be here to address, which is the emergency order that I renewed over the weekend. Data shows rates of COVID transmission are dropping precipitously. Nonetheless, we are still at a rate of transmission that is double the threshold, the rate of high transmission. The current rate of transmission is 243 per 100,000, and it is significantly lower than the rate at the beginning of the month, which was 1,651 cases per 100,000 persons. Still, Cobb County has not dipped below 100 out of 100,000 cases, which again would signal that we no longer have high transmission of COVID. Another data point used to indicate high transmission of COVID is the positivity rate. A positivity rate above 5% is considered high. While at the beginning of the month, we were at a positivity rate of 22%, the last metric I received from Cobb Douglas Public Health was a rate of 7.9%, which is certainly much closer to 5%, but we are not below the threshold rate of high transmission just yet. Additional data that I consider when putting forward an emergency order is feedback from our hospital system, both quantitative and qualitative. I have weekly calls with them where they provide information about bed usage, ventilator use, staff levels, and emergency room impact. This feedback helps me understand the impact that the pandemic is having on the hospital system's ability to care for our citizens. While the burden on our hospital system is decreasing, conditions are still burdening. This has resulted in persons not being able to receive prompt attention for non-COVID matters, and has also resulted in depleting availability of healthcare workers who have been pushed to their brink. The emergency order that I put in place recognizes both quantitative and qualitative data, again of COVID transmission numbers, and qualitative information about the impact on our hospital system. And when it's put in place, it has information to encourage the county to still take precaution and taking part in activities like getting vaccinated. It also provides the county opportunity to modify our meetings to help keep the public safe. And modifications can include things like allowing people to participate in our zoning meeting virtually and having our meetings in a hybrid format. With respect to any modifications made to our building operations, that is in the purview of our county manager, who does take into consideration the emergency order, but she also takes into consideration how she can help keep people in our building safe here. Measures that may be put in place may include the wearing of masks, social distancing. As you can see, our chairs are not as close together as they typically are, and sometimes we have capacity restrictions, particularly at our event facilities. Please note that our emergency order typically has an effective 30-day time window. Nonetheless, the order can be ended at any time within those 30 days. Shall we have rates that fall below the threshold rates of high transmission and the ease as burden at our hospitals? I will be more than glad to end the order. I am no glutton for the punishment that I receive and the emails and calls that I get that consider me none other than a child of God. I too look forward to the day where I don't have to wear this mask before you and we can see all of our county facilities full again. The numbers are dropping, and I am very hopeful that that day will be with us soon. With that, I'm going to turn to our regular agenda for today. We have five presentations, which will be brought before you by our commissioners. The first one, which is to present a certificate to Acworth Church of Latter Day Saints, will be brought by our District 3 Commissioner.
If I could have the Acworth Church of Latter Day Saints. This group has been instrumental in cleaning up Noonday and Rogers cemeteries in District 3, and we're here to recognize them and thank them for their efforts. So, sorry. This certificate of appreciation is presented to the Acworth Church of Latter Day Saints. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners and the Cobb County Preservation Commission salute the Acworth Church of Latter Day Saints for your dedication. The church has been instrumental in the cleanup, maintenance, and care of the Noonday and Rogers cemeteries. Your dedication has helped keep those Cobb County landmarks a sacred place for all to visit. Thank you for the priceless services you have provided our community. This is the 22nd day of February 2022. And if you would like to introduce yourself and tell us a little about your cleanup project...
Sure, go ahead. I'm Richard Graham, and I'm from the Butler Creek Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints in the Acworth area. But it's been a great pleasure for us to serve and to help clean up there. Do you want to just pass?
Jimmy Richards with the Cemetery Preservation Commission cannot say enough about these groups that helped us take care of our cemeteries, helped clean up some pretty nasty places. One thing they learned about is what poison ivy, what poison oak will do to you in Cobb County, but we thank you all so much for helping us preserve our history.
My name is Dave McFarland. I just do what I'm told.
I'm Jan Galt, and I'm with the Cobb County Cemetery Preservation Commission.
I'm Lisa Cheek. I'm a volunteer.
I'm Lindsay Seber. I'm with the Riverline Historic Area.
Thank you all. And we will get a picture. I'm going to give you this certificate.
Can't behave. Here we go, three. All right, here we go. Three, two, one, and done. Thank you.
Thank you all. Are you going to start?
Commissioner Burrow, why don't we do our presentations for 1, 2, and 5?
Okay. Next, we have the Marietta Church of Latter Day Saints for their efforts with Maloney Springs Cemetery. So, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners and the Cobb County Preservation Commission salute the Marietta Church of Latter Day Saints for your dedication. The church has been instrumental in the cleanup, maintenance, and care of the Maloney Springs Cemetery. Your devotion to this cause has helped keep this landmark a sacred place for all who visit. Thank you for the priceless services you have provided our community. This is the 22nd day of February 2022. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. So my name is Bill Nagel. I'm the bishop of the Marietta Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints, and we're here in Marietta and helping out with the cemetery. So we thank everyone for the opportunity to help out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's your certificate. And Commissioner Richardson, do you want to do yours? And we have one more group. Do we want to do a picture?
Sure. First, let's give these, first, let's give them a round of applause for their service to the community.
All right. There you go. In three, two, one, thanks.
All right. And Commissioners, if you can indulge me, since a number of the people who are up here are also associated with item 5, if we move that up to this third item, are you okay with that, Commissioners?
Uh huh.
All right. I'm seeing some general consensus. Very good. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Riverline Historic. Yes. And if there's anyone else, is everyone here or...
Yep.
Okay. Let's go. All right. So Cobb County Board of Commissioners and the Cobb County Preservation Commission salute the Riverline Historic Association for its dedication. The group has been instrumental in the cleanup, maintenance, and care of the Turner Sewell and St. John cemeteries. Your devotion to this cause has helped keep these landmarks a sacred place for all who visit. Thank you for the priceless services you have provided for our community on this, the 22nd day of February 2022. It's a good day for you. And for those that don't know, Lindsay also serves on my cabinet and has done just amazing, given so much to work with the community in different efforts and appreciate your service in that light.
Thank you.
The second one for Roberta Cook, who is also very active for many years. Cobb County Board of Commissioners and the Cobb County Preservation Commission salute Roberta Cook for her dedication. She's been instrumental in the cleanup, maintenance, and care of the Turner Sewell and St. John cemeteries. Her devotion to this cause has helped keep these landmarks a sacred place for all who visit, and thank you for the priceless services that she has provided for our community. So thank you. Soon you'll take this one, too. Perfect. Thank you. And that concludes item 5.
All right. Great. Why don't we get a picture with you in it as well?
Same drill as last time. There we go. Three, two, one, and done.
Thank you all so very much. There is one important person on the Cemetery Preservation Committee that's not with us tonight but is the leader of the group for many, many years, and that's Helga Hong. And I hope she's watching at home, and thank you, Helga.
We have one last presentation, which will be brought by Commissioner Richardson.
This is for Wanda Cunningham. If there's anyone to come up for that, thank you. Wanda J. Cunningham was a community activist and philanthropist. Her passions included serving disadvantaged women and children. Together with her daughter Shamika, she worked with various Cobb County schools to help homeless, disadvantaged students and families to provide outreach and holiday support. Wanda volunteered countless hours with various, oh, sorry, countless hours with various community task forces in Cobb County, Cobb and Georgia Community Coalition festivals, from Austell to Powder Springs to her backyard of Smyrna and Vitings. She worked tirelessly advocating on education, transportation, housing, and environmental development with City Zoning Development Education Board and county elected representatives. She served on the Housing Authority for Cobb County since 2017, and she founded Women of the Southern Region, which promoted grassroots campaign efforts and especially campaigns to support women for political office. She was featured in a national Women of Color election 2020 campaign and continued her work in the Get Out the Vote campaigns on federal, state, and local levels. And an entrepreneur, Wanda has been in the construction industry since 1986. She started CDG panels to increase the solar footprint for underserved communities. She managed the collaboration of national partnerships and performed several projects and developments for municipalities in the metro Atlanta area. And unfortunately, she lost her battle with ovarian cancer on Saturday, November 13, 2021. She was surrounded by her daughter and other loved ones. Now we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, hereby recognize Wanda J. Cunningham for all her work on creating stable and affordable housing for the residents of Cobb County on this 22nd day of February 2022. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to this historic commission and Chairwoman Cupid for honoring my mother and all of her work that she did here in Cobb County in trying to make sure housing, affordable housing, was available to those that really needed it. And her body may be gone, but her spirit and strength is still right here on earth through me, so the fight continues. So thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else say thank you?
I am Sharon J. Hill, and I do want to thank the full commission, and I will follow Shamika Cunningham in saying historic as well, but for what we stand in Wanda's stead, that it is for all of Cobb, that as she served on the Cobb County Housing Authority, and that really speaks to it all. And so we forge forward in her memory. It is this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Guillory with the Level Blend, and as well, she is a realtor and currently working with Senator Gail Davenport on down payment assistance.
And of course, Monica Deliancy, a Cobb County staple right now, making her way. Peace.
Thank you to all of you for your service.
Stay for a picture?
Very good. Here we go. Three, two, one. Looks good.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a public hearing this evening, which will be brought by our Department of Transportation.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager, Drew Essler, Department of Transportation. The department has received a request to close and abandon the public right-of-way on a portion of Head Drive as the section no longer serves a public purpose. In accordance with OCGA Section 32-7-2, a public hearing must be held prior to the closing and abandonment of a public street. With that, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Head Drive located in Landlot 268 of the 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia.
Thank you. For those of you who are here to participate in the public hearing with respect to this transportation item specifically, you will have three minutes to address this item. An unlimited number of speakers may address this item as part of this public hearing. With that, I'll go ahead and declare this public hearing open and allow anyone to speak to address the board. Okay. Seeing no one to address the board for this item, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you. And with that, the department also recommends that the Board of Commissioners determine that said right-of-way serves no substantial public purpose and authorize the disposition of same-by-quick claim deed to the adjoining owners, Joseph James Bellady, Amelia H. Bellady, and Angela D. Brooks.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve item number six.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
All right. We now have our first public comment for the evening.
Before I call any of the speakers, I would like to read the decorum for the public comment speakers, please. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it is appropriate to review the related meeting rules. All speakers should state their name and whether or not they're speaking on behalf of an organization. All comments should be directed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, the audience be respectful and courteous to all the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give the others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with respect, even if you disagree with their comments. Statements made during the public comment portion does not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb government. And each speaker will be afforded five minutes with the timer being on the podium, so you can watch your time. There are 12 speakers signed up tonight. Six will speak prior to our agenda, and our first speaker tonight is Mr. Hillwright.
Hillwright, this past six months, we have uncovered a problem. For decades, we've had residential, commercial, and institutional development greatly expand. With that expansion came stormwater infrastructure put in place by developers and forgotten. But until only about 20 years ago, there was little thought to make record-keeping a requirement. So we have decades of shared community assets that were put in and forgotten about, until a single storm exposed that we had a huge gap, that we as a county have no records on these assets, that we as a county can't even manage enforcement of stormwater, that we as a county have a token stormwater department compared to the task at hand. That's really no one's fault, especially those in the department that I know are doing their best that they can with so few resources that they have no hope of being able to operate proactively. The stormwater department is still a department that focuses on serving developers for new development and not so much protecting citizens. This has to change. We have an acute problem where people in our community are facing losing their homes. They are trapped. They can't afford to repair an asset that serves the whole community and even the county's properties. They are being mistreated because no one has a plan for decades, and the county has such a pitiful budget, the county is not only, is really just defending a budget, not solving this acute problem, a problem that appeared to be mostly in District 2 and some in District 4. But we now know that the problem's in all four districts. That we have, then we have the other side of the coin. What is the board going to do to keep more acute problems from happening? What is the board going to do to fill the gaps from the past and make sure that we don't have more gaps in the future? What is the board going to do... What is the board going to do to ensure that the stormwater department isn't so underfunded that they're restricted to being a service for developers instead of protecting citizens? I appreciate Commissioner Richardson's efforts and focus. Well, she can't stop the rain, and she can't solve county problems all by herself. The citizens of Cobb need the support and effort from the whole board. I've talked to a lot of people, and one common thing I keep hearing from many different neighborhoods is that we never used to have an issue until they built East Cobb Middle School and the Brumby Elementary School. It's a very common thing, but I'm a little surprised to learn that citizens of Cobb are not being protected when it comes to stormwater by the county stormwater department when a school is built. Frankly, it scares me because I've seen drainage on Cobb County property being neglected for decades now. They even spent a million dollars to build new tennis courts. Now they're washing away. You know what the solution is? The school district is going to move the tennis courts and hope that drainage is better. But here comes the new East Valley Elementary School. But guess what they're doing? Dumping all the water right where the houses have just flooded with no oversight from the county stormwater department. This board has final approval of their budget each year. Use it if you need to to make some changes this year. Every time it rains, I talk to people afterward to see how they made out. The constant I hear is the damage is getting worse or it's happening again. They tell me they don't know how long they can hang on or if the next storm will push them over the edge. We all know about the April showers. We know that the threat that has been uncovered. Will this board enact in time? Or will this board become the board responsible for doing nothing? The board that people see is failing them. Chairman Cupid, I'm asking for your leadership to get something done. Your citizens can't keep hanging on, and you don't want to be responsible for the next crisis. You have a chance to rise or fall. What will your choice be? Can the people of Cobb count on you? One last thing. I'm a proud citizen of Lee's Cobb. In Lee's Cobb, we have less taxes to retain our great fire department and police departments. In Lee's Cobb, we won't wake up and find ourselves with a half-baked plan. In Lee's Cobb, we don't make decisions about community behind closed doors because that's not the least thing to do. Because something, because sometimes being leased is more. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Dan Larkin.
This is some video of flooding in my neighborhood from the storm on September 7th. Stormwater washed out a lot of property. My name is Daniel Larkin. I live in the Meadowbrook neighborhood. Two of my neighbors were flooded by stormwater on September 7th. One neighbor, Stacy, and his wife Consuela, they couldn't be here tonight. They're flying back from Texas, their visiting family. They live on Maze Drive and had four feet of water in their basement. They lost her car, the furnace, and many personal belongings to the stormwater. Down the street on Oriole Drive, there was a huge amount of stormwater that formerly collected in two vacant lots. That was the water on the video. These low-lying lots that were full of vegetation were backfilled to make room for two new homes. Tons and tons of dirt were brought in to fill. Now, the water that used to drain into the earth now hits more impervious surface to shed water. This is causing problems for the neighbors. When my neighbor Mark asked the builder about the situation, he was told by the builder, "Don't point a finger at me. The county gave me a permit to build here." People are buying homes in areas that should have never been built on because of stormwater issues. This is not looking out for the public at all. What will be done to keep this from happening again? Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Rebecca Klein.
Good evening. Certain events will stick with people for the rest of their lives. The events that occurred on the evening of September 7th, 2021, will be one of those days that will forever haunt me. That evening, I was woken by the storms to discover that the normal stormwater runoff that flows under my property had turned into a deadly flash flood. One of the defining features of our neighborhood is the multitude of stormwater runoff creeks that flows from the Swell Library Cultural Center down to the larger Soap Creek downstream. One of these creeks runs behind all the houses on our street. When we bought our house roughly two years ago, we discovered that the creek is diverted underground through a giant culvert pipe as it passes through our property. The pipe begins on our upstream neighbor's property, runs under their driveway, through our yard, and exits on our downstream neighbor's property. This culvert was necessary in order for the developer to build our three homes in the late 70s. On the night of September 7th, I looked in horror as that peaceful little creek rose over eight feet, overwhelmed the culvert, and created a raging river several feet deep in our backyard. I ran down to my walkout basement to find several inches of dirty muddy water that had already seeped in and started to grab items to rescue. I ran to wake up my boyfriend and my elderly mother to help save items. The muddy cold water rose to over three feet while we tried to grab items and avoid broken glass. I had a moment of panic that we would get trapped in the basement due to the rising levels. Once the flood stopped, we had to break open one of the doors to release the water. Dirty, cold, and tired, we went to bed to deal with it in the morning. Sadly, having to clean out over two inches of mud and debris wasn't the problem. The ruined furnace and water heater wasn't the problem. I wish that was all we had to deal with. In the morning, we discovered the real aftermath of the flood. It had decimated my neighbor's driveway and exposed and crushed the large culvert in my backyard. There is now a giant sea cold in our yard that sits only a foot away from the foundation of the house. It gets better. We are informed by stormwater management that they have no record of this culvert and that we, the homeowners, must have put it in. This is not possible. The pipe is far too large to have been installed with our house in the way. There is no possible way this could have happened without the county knowing as it crosses three properties. Our plat even explicitly mentions an easement. Nevertheless, we are informed, too bad, so sad, you're responsible for the repairs. How in the world can a homeowner afford these repairs? And to add salt to the wound, the county maintains a section of pipe in easement, not even 400 feet from our home. How can the county pick and choose what to maintain? The water that runs through our properties flows downstream through that section. And I want to state, there is no flood insurance that would cover this damage. Let me repeat. There is no flood insurance on this planet that would cover this damage. Even if we could afford the six-figure repairs, there is no assurance this won't happen again as we're paying off a large repair loan. Instead, we are being faced with financial ruin on a home we haven't even lived in for two years. Every time it rains, I cringe in fear that that hole is going to get bigger. Every time my phone warns me of a potential flash flood, I'm brought back to that evening of September 7th. I ask the county to stop hiding behind poor record-keeping and take responsibility for the repairs. I ask the residents of Cobb County to review their plats to see if they're in the same boat as me. I'm not the only one in the county who has a ticking time bomb in their yard. As the county continues to grow without updating or maintaining the current stormwater infrastructure, this type of damage is going to become more widespread. Thank you.
Sir, you're out of order, please.
Everything. She says everything that happened to me. Thank you very much, ma'am.
The next speaker is Mr. George Hitchcock.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioner. I want to briefly just talk to you about my experiences in my neighborhood.
Okay, sir, may you repeat your name, please, for the record?
My name is George Hitchcock.
George Hitchcock, thank you.
Thank you. Night of September 7th was quite a traumatic experience. We experienced probably six to seven feet of water coming down Robinson Creek, which flows through my property and my adjoining neighbors. It eventually discharges into Sewell Mill. We're adjacent to East Cobb Park. This happens to be a picture at 1:30 a.m. of the creek. And in the far back corner, you can actually see that the water was coursing two feet over my bridge culvert. Eventually, that washed out my driveway, two of my neighbor's driveways, and had a detrimental effect, obviously, on us. I've been working with Hill as we've gone through in the last six months, going through this process of trying to identify how we can, how the county can improve its oversight and management of the stormwater system in order to minimize these events. Yes, we'll recognize that this was a unique event. But in the last two months, we've had two more flash floods. And I've seen, not to this extent, but I've had overtopping events of my driveway continuously. So, even an inch of rain is enough now, given the nature of it, to put the creek up and out of its bounds. So, in support of all of the other homeowners on my block and several of them that I've consulted with, we just asked that the county look into the, to developing a system that we can manage these events in a more reasonable manner, understanding that the damage that I had to my property, and I can, when you look at my driveway that was pushed 200 feet down and the bridges collapsed, none of this is covered by flood insurance. Yes, I'll recognize part of my property is in the flood zone. I do have FEMA flood insurance, but none of this is covered. And so, it's a significant out-of-pocket expense in order to afford most of these people that cannot afford that. So, I thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Ms. Jennifer Anderson.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Anderson. I live at 1551 St. John Avenue. I'm in the city of Marietta. And the video you see here is not as dramatic as what we've just seen, but this is not from September 17th. This is five years ago on a gentle spring rain. But I'm struggling to keep this water diverted out of my yard. It's just runoff from the commercial properties behind my neighborhood on Powers Ferry. And I, too, have been told by the city, that's a private matter. That's between you and whoever owns the property behind you. But the problem is, the runoff is coming from everywhere up Powers Ferry. It's hitting the next person, the next person, and the next person. I happen to be at the bottom of the hill by the creek. And I'm also experiencing erosion since September 17th. The creek by my house is now undercutting my yard. And I'm losing actual property. Land is going away. I've also been told that that creek is man-made. It's, it was piped in. The water comes from somewhere. And again, they don't know where it came from because that was before they kept records of where the water was being diverted to and from. So, a large sinkhole began the day after September 17th on another property behind me. And the city will not take any action on that sinkhole either. Many of the property owners are working on dealing with this. But what I'm here to ask is that the city and the county work together. Please don't leave a homeowner left alone to deal with more water than I'm responsible for. I know in the past, the city has come to help. They enlarged the culvert that goes under the street from this man-made creek. They acknowledged that it was a city issue, and they didn't force me to have to bear the burden of that expense. So, they enlarged the culvert, and my yard did stop flooding after that. So, and I thank everyone involved. If the county officials had anything to do with that, too, I thank you. But we have to stop the bleeding. I can't keep throwing money at dry creek beds that can't contain the volume and velocity of what's coming through the top corner of my yard. And now, it comes from my neighbor's yard because this water is creating its own path, and we don't know where it's going to end up next. But thank you for listening, and I appreciate all your help.
The next speaker is Ms. Sabrina Mayo.
I'm Sabrina Mao. After listening to all the story, you know, my heart really goes to them. I hope maybe the county can help you fix it. I'm Sabrina Mao, and I moved to Cobb in 1983. So, I am always, almost here 40 years. I'm a single parent since 1979. I raised my daughter and put her through medical school. And I'm a mother and I was a businesswoman. And I had to provide for my daughter and I, and myself. And we couldn't just spend any, on anything, whatever we want. We had to watch our pennies in order to live. We had to pay the rent and, you know, just watch our budget. If it's not in our budget, we can't spend. Now, I am over 70, and I live on Social Security. And I like to go on cruises and make all those other plans, but I can't because I have certain budget that I have to, you know, adhere to. And if I can't afford it, I just can't go. And I think that's just basic personal finance and personal accounting. And I think Cobb County should manage Cobb County's budget, just like I do and like everybody, you know, manage their own personal affair. Cobb County can't just go on spending, you know, because it's something nice to do. If we don't have the money, the county shouldn't just raise the taxes because every penny, every dollar of your tax, the spending that you spend comes out of taxpayers' pocket. So, tonight, I'd like to talk about the mobility splot. And on November 29th, 2021, Mr. Lambert had mentioned, given a presentation before Government Accountability Task Force. And he mentioned 14 reasons that why we shouldn't have the mobility splot. And I don't have, because of time limit, I only have five minutes, so I couldn't name all of them. So, I would just name a few. In general, the genesis, I need to give you a little background and provide for the background of the information that this splot is and how it came to being. The genesis of mobility splot came as a result of two pieces of legislation. The justification for that account, that, for that county, because Atlanta metropolitan area needs to spend more on transportation and transit to meet anticipated growth in that area. And they want to provide better connectivity from county to county throughout this region. And the first part of the splot, the mobility splot, is HB 170, which allows up to 1% increase of our current 6% sales tax for five years and could be used for whatever traditional think of as transportation infrastructure, such as road, bridges, sidewalks, bike lanes, and trails. The second piece of the mobility spots, splot, is the transit splot that passed under the House Bill 930. Also come, can go up to 1%, and that could up to 30 years. So, if both splot- So if both splosh passes, then that means our sales tax will increase from 6% to 8%, which would be 33% increase. So here are some of the reasons that we oppose the splosh. It will cost the average taxpayer in Cobb approximately $200 per year for each 1% increase in the sales tax. You then need to ask yourself, if you will be getting $400 worth of value per year, and that's 8% sales tax, either in the form of using more public transit yourself, or leave your car in the garage, or in the false promise that it will reduce traffic congestion and commute time. Second, proponent of the transit splosh expressed lot of concern for low-income people. In one county commissioner said that the transit splosh is not for the purpose of improving mobility and reducing trip time, but to make sure everyone in Cobb has a decent transit option. Yet, an increase in the sales tax has disproportionate impact on the poor, where a much larger portion of their income would go towards paying the tax than it would be for the more affluent. So the questions we need to ask is, how many people lack transportation options? Can that number be verified? We have these people. Are they in Cobb, or do they want to come to Cobb?
Excuse me, ma'am. Your time has run.
It's five minutes already?
Yes.
Golly Moses. Well, anyhow, I hope the commissioner will pay attention to what I said, and don't spend money that we don't have in the mobility spot. We don't need it.
That concludes the first set of public speakers.
Thank you, Debbie. Commissioners, I need your help to add two items to the agenda. The first would be a non-agenda item number 43, to approve settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Warren McCoy to, and the next agenda item is agenda item number 44, to approve settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Timothy Young. So with that, I make a motion for us to add those two non-agenda items. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All of, excuse me, I keep thinking we're back in a virtual meeting. We'll go ahead and call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, commissioners. The agenda has been revised, and a number of the revised forms have been given to commissioners by way of these pink slips. And I make a motion for us to approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in, sorry. We'll go ahead and call the question. Motion passes 5-0. When we're virtual, I have to ask who's in favor versus calling the question, because we don't have the machine, and we are now back in person. So please bear with me as we transition back to being fully in person. All right, we are going to move to the first non-agenda item, excuse me, regular agenda item, which is from me, an advisement from our county chair. The agenda item is to appropriate $10,000 of funding from our general fund budget to support the state of the county event. This year, I've decided to move the state of the county to an evening event versus it being a daytime event, so that we can have greater participation from the public, and not only invite the members of our business community, which have been able to participate in it through the chamber, but have our residents and stakeholders all in the same place as we acknowledge the accomplishments of this county throughout the year. In putting this event forward, I had received some concern from our county attorney's office that they would prefer that when the county has events, that we not receive sponsorships out of concern for conflict of interest that can arise if anyone who sponsors ever has to have any business with the county. And therefore, they suggested that instead of receiving funding for this event in that manner, that we actually use our own county funds to put forth this county event. Consequently, we have this agenda item here today. After serving on this board for, going on 10 years, this has been the first time this concern about conflict has been shared with me. And so I shared a lot of the concerns that our commissioners raised when we had our agenda prep session just yesterday, because it was shared that it was a preference for funding for this event to come from the public sector and for taxpayer dollars not necessarily to be used for this event. And I can understand that. However, again, due to the advisement of our county attorney, and me also being an attorney and recognizing their concern, I wanted to at least put this agenda item forward to ask for the commissioner's support in, in moving this event forward in this manner. Another concern addressed was the concern--
I'm going to call point of order. We haven't, no, I'm calling point of order.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still presenting--
There's no motion for discussion.
Commissioner, I'm still presenting. This is my agenda item to present, and Commissioner, you are out of order.
I would like, I would like clarification from the county attorney.
I think that the order or the motion, the agenda item should be presented without discussion. There should be a motion on the floor for discussion.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm still presenting the item. Okay. Thank you.
I have another question.
I'm sorry, this is Commissioner, I'm sorry, you're out of order when I'm presenting--
Point of order.
Commissioner, I'm asking, no, Commissioner, I'm asking for you to please refrain from interrupting. When we have other staff that presents matters, and there are questions from the Board of Commissioners, they are able to entertain that in their presentation of an agenda item. This is not the first time this has happened. I'm acknowledging concerns that were shared in the presentation of this item. I have never seen a staff member or anyone present an agenda item and be interrupted by a commissioner, which I find completely out of order. They also know that comments are to be directed to the chair, and the commissioner is choosing not to follow decorum in doing that, and that is completely out of order, and that will not be acceptable. And so Commissioner, I ask that you please resume order and allow me to finish presenting this item. Thank you.
Point of order to the county attorney. When we have an agenda brought forward, it's with a recommendation. The recommendation that is printed in our agenda book has not been read.
Yes.
So does the recommendation need to be read in order to put forth a motion to then have discussion?
Chairwoman Cupid has stated that she's presenting her item. If you would let her finish presenting the item, and then read the recommendation and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioner, I've tolerated three interruptions. I ask that you please do not interrupt in my delivery of the presentation of this item, and we will have opportunity to discuss it. Again, during yesterday's discussion of this agenda item, there are also concerns shared about the business community and their concerns with respect to not having this event held through the chamber. And I have had discussion with the chamber with respect to this event, and we have actually discussed having a subsequent business update that would be an update of the county, a state of the county address, but it would be catered more for the business community. And that is to follow and, in fact, receive confirmation of that likely to occur in June, but I will share more once that has been officially announced by the chamber. So I want to at least share with commissioners that, at least from my discussion with the president and CEO of the chamber, that they are in recognition of this event with a desire to still have an event with the chamber. So with that, again, this is not necessarily the agenda item I wish to put forward, but under advisement, I am putting forward an item today with the recommendation that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriation of contingency funding within the Board of Commissioners' general fund budget in support of the state of the county events and activities in an amount not to exceed $10,000, and to authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. And with that, it's rare that I make a recommendation and then have to make a motion, but I'll make a motion that we approve this agenda item as revised. Is there a second? There has to be a second for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
Commissioner, you can direct me, and I'll direct who speaks. Yes, thank you. You, yes, do you have anything to, yes, you have a second?
Yeah, for discussion. While I understand that the contingency fund is set aside for events such as this, I think that's fine. I just have some questions with respect to the number of people that can attend, which we discussed yesterday at the work session. And my only concern is that we utilize these funds, and we may have to turn people away. So I get that, obviously, there's going to be a capacity, but there is a, there is a capacity for the venue, and then there's the capacity for the event. And I just wanted a little clarification on that, because, you know, if we move forward with these funds, then I think we need to maximize the capacity however that looks.
Thank you for sharing that. It was our desire to have this in one of our largest venues, and the event venue will be Jim Miller Park, which can accommodate a large number of people. I don't have that number offhand, but it was built to be able to have events comparable to what you would see in the Galleria. And so looking at what, I can only conjecture what I've seen from the past state of the county events and from other large events that we've had, that, that event hall is large enough to accommodate it. So the only issue would be with respect to if there's any cost associated with any food that's provided, which would be a desire, as I tend to think in the evening, that does help to facilitate fellowship of attendees. However, considering the cost of this event, that will not be a limitation beyond the capacity of, of the event hall. You're welcome. Commissioner Burrell.
Yes, Madam Chair. I believe I made my concerns clear yesterday at work session on this agenda item, and I cannot support it. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
I think I certainly made my concerns heard as well, and there are still just a lot of questions. I wholeheartedly believe in the attempt to build public outreach components, and I believe that's a worthwhile debate and discussion. But I think that's a worthwhile debate and discussion.
Me too. And again, I'll share with both, with all of you, I have the same concerns. This is not the agenda item that I wanted to put forward. I would much rather put forward an event and not have this kind of police, this kind of discourse amongst our commissioners regarding something that should be viewed as a positive event. I think the county attorney, which I can't, I can share with you what I believe his advice was, but I could share with you, my concerns differ. I believe that this board has partnered with our business community and still been objective with our relationship with members of the business community. And there have been many other programs and events of this county where we have had donations and sponsors from the business community. And so that would be my desire, but nonetheless, out of respect for their advisement, I'm putting this forward. And if it moves forward, great. If it doesn't, I will move forward with asking for sponsorships for the meeting. I'm sorry, ladies, we can hear you up here. Thank you. Commissioner Garble, did you have any comments to add?
No comments.
All right, so there's a motion, and there's a second, and we'll go ahead and call the question. The motion fails for one. Thank you, commissioners. As I shared, we will have the state of the district on the 31st, but it will be funded through sponsorships. With that, we will move into our next agenda item, which is from Superior Court Administration.
Of course you can.
As long as you're distant, you're good.
All right. Well, thank you very much. My name's Rob Leonard. I'm the chief judge in Superior Court. It's a pleasure to be here with you all this evening. I'm coming to present on behalf of not only Superior Court, but also the District Attorney's Office, Clerk's Office, and Sheriff's Office as well. We have an item that is number 30 in your agenda, and the idea is this, there's a federal, federal money that has come through the state. It's ARPA money. It's different than the county ARPA money in that it has certain restrictions that are attached to it, that are put on by the governor's office and OPB. That money, there's, some of it has been dedicated to the courts, and that is going to flow through the administrative office of the courts. On behalf of everybody that I just mentioned a minute ago, I prepared a grant request, and that grant request has been approved, and so just short of $2 million. The restrictions on that is for temporary positions, and it has to be dedicated to clearing serious violent felony backlog stemming from the statewide suspension of jury trials during the pandemic. So we applied for that, received it. This item, if you all approve it, would authorize us to accept the money. It is a, it's a reimbursement grant, so the county encourages the expense, and then the money comes to, to fill it. As I said, they're temporary positions. The grant is, it goes year by year, so we, we can't extend it into 2023 and 2024 if the program is working the way that it's designed, and we want to do it. And I think there's a high likelihood that we'll be back before you to ask for those positions to continue into '23 and '24 with that grant funding. But since they did take it year by year, we'll just come see you every year as we move through that. Are there any questions about the item?
We thank you for revising it to show the impact. With that, commissioners, is there a motion to approve? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, excuse me, sorry, commissioners, we'll call the question. Creature of habit. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you all very much.
With that, we are moving into our Department of Transportation regular tab.
Good evening, Drew Wrestler, DOT, once again. On item number 31, respectfully, out of a conversation that came out of the agenda work session, would like to request that item be pulled to be brought back at a later date.
Thank you.
Item number 32, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with Acceler Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $154,782.81 for Bell's Ferry Road at Turner Dixon Road, project number D 6040, Phase B. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve, and thanks for the savings.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners-- Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with DNH Construction Company Incorporated. A savings to the project in the amount of $49,654.38 for Busby Drive Trail, project number TR518. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve and another savings.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize signalization of the Riverside Parkway at Premier Lane intersection. Approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $325,651.05 for installation of a traffic signal at this location. Project number TR521, authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to share, I know that we have some residents from that community. Ever since we put in those medians, it's been very difficult to navigate exiting Premier Lane and so this is a much needed and overdue traffic signal and I just want to thank DOT for moving this forward. With that, we'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize advertisement for in conduct of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for various projects in the 2022 SPOLOST Transportation Improvements Program and further authorize the issuance of requests for qualifications, requests for proposals, or task orders to secure required services as shown on the attached list of upcoming projects for 2022.
All right, so moved as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question and the motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Believe we are now on to our second public comment. Okay.
We have six speakers in this segment of public comment. The first speaker is Ms. Anna Tillman.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So I will ask you tonight to stop pushing rentals and UDC zoning, which are entirely the wrong solution for us in Cobb County. The solution to the affordable housing crisis is not forcing multi-story Soviet-style mixed-use developments and rentals into our single-family suburban neighborhoods. This is why we moved here, for the suburban neighborhoods. Yet Chair Cupid and the majority of this Board of Commissioners, except for Commissioner Gambrell, approved many hundreds of new rentals in just the last year when Cobb County is already over 30% rentals per the last census. Experts say that those numbers of rentals are already past a dangerous tipping point. Communities are strongest when they have more owner-occupied, single-family homes. Renters are transient. You cannot have good schools when schools cannot depend on stable owner-occupied family homes and a stable student population with a stable tax base. Our good schools are the reason most people want to live in Cobb County, along with, so far, comparatively low taxes, lower than surrounding counties. Taxes will go up more because rentals are less dependable as a tax base. I actually moved to Cobb County for the school tax exemption for seniors and I certainly hope that stays in place. This Board of Commissioners has been pushing more mixed-use developments, for example, which contain rentals and retail. This is a recipe for failure. The government is giving developers special incentives to build more rentals and more mixed-use, but this is the wrong way to go. America and Atlanta are over-retailed according to many realty experts already. Malls and shops are failing. Many people shop on the internet. The following are solutions brilliantly outlined by experts in The American Thinker. Encourage investments in old buildings, existing structures. Create tax incentives for employers. Use funds responsibly. Make sure that low-income families receive the help they need while preparing them for financial independence down the road. Some cities like Cleveland have already begun to do this by allowing renters in certain developments to accumulate rental or rent towards a down payment on their own home. Large investment firms like BlackRock have been buying up single-family homes and turning them into expensive rentals. This is a major reason for the affordable housing crisis. We demand a moratorium on building new rentals and mixed-use. There is too much already. Be smart and implement good solutions such as the ones we outlined and do not implement the dangerous UDC zoning that Chair Lisa Cupid is pushing. It will weaken our community and county. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Mr. Trevino Adderley.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'd like to take a moment of your time this evening to bring in awareness.
Sure, sir, state your name again for the record.
I'm sorry, my name is Trevino Adderley.
Okay, thank you.
The awareness that I'd like to bring to your attention is low-income housing. It's a social disparity that people have been experiencing for the past, I'd say, at least 60 or 70 decades, 70 years rather. And most recently, there's been assistance provided by the federal government so that people can get some type of assistance. That, what happens when the assistance is inadequate. It's been inadequate because it's backdating five or six years ago what the needs were back then. I'll give you an example. I applied for housing assistance. When it came time to renew my landlord, they need a new lease. The lease increased. That lease increase almost made me ineligible for housing assistance. So the amounts, they set the guidelines for assistance, doesn't cover whatever you need and it's disqualifying people that need assistance. I am disabled, I've been disabled about 12 or 13 years now. And so I live on disability, as I'm quite sure several residents here in Cobb County. The awareness that I'd like to bring to you is that even though there are systems in place, none of these systems seem to be working. There is a project called the Marietta, the City of Marietta Rental Assistance, Project Based Assistance Program. They provide a voucher where you get assistance with your rent. The waiting list opened up in July of 2019. It's now February of 2022, some three years, and I'm still on the waiting list, waiting for assistance. How can that be adequate assistance? And I even called them to follow up every couple of months and I'm explaining it, they tell me, say, well, the waiting list period is from two years to five years. We're in a crisis, an economic crisis, a social crisis, a health crisis. How can that be substantial to say, well, oh, you gotta wait another two more years? So I want to bring it to y'all's awareness to say, you know, these are situations that's going on and I don't think that it's been made public or that you all know what's going on to the citizens and people of Cobb County. And I express to you that there's a need for help and assistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Rochelle Reese.
Hi, I'm Rachel Reese. I was here back in December. I was the one that was homeless and on social security, had the nine strokes, the breathing problems and all of that. Well, coming here, Mus Ministries was able to put me in a hotel, me and my family, and they gave me a coupon, housing coupon, which was great. Now, thank you guys because that helped a lot. But I came to get put because I had a Section 8 voucher that due to the COVID, I was, it ran out. And with my health condition, I wasn't able to go out and look and they would not just give me more time. And so the coupon they gave me is for a year where they, I paid 30% of it and then they pay their part, but at the end of the year, I'm back in the same position. My income don't change and the rent would be, the rent went up in, for our state. And so the three bedrooms run like from $1,500 to $1,700, which they would pay all but 30% of it. And after that, I would be, I don't make that much income to keep the house that I'm able to get. And while, right now, they got me in a hotel, which is $80 a day, 84 on the weekends, which they paid because the coupon they gave me ran out on the 11th, but they did an extension, but they didn't extend the hotel. So I've had to pay my money, the church money, the resources, but I've ran all the resources and on the 19th, you have, I have to get out. But the, from the 19th to the 28th, which is five days, I can't pay the rent for the hotel and they refused to pay it. When my Savannah at Mus Ministries, Hunter, told me as long as I had the coupon, they would pay the rent for the hotel. But she said that was only to the 11th, it don't cover the extension. So it's like a win-lose situation because I only have five days left, only had from the 11th to the 28th, I just needed help for me to at least to get in and use the coupon for the year, which then I would be back in the same position. But I really need this Section 8 voucher back because I would pay my percent, they pay their percent, but I'd be stable, me and my family, my children. And they're on social security and stuff too, so it would be based on our income. And so I just come to plead to you guys to see if I can just get my Section 8 voucher back or this, I do appreciate this coupon that Mus Ministry does because it's great for people that work and that can afford the rent, that they can save money and all that, and it will help me for that year. And hopefully God will send something else to where I can maybe get a part-time job and help towards the rent. But right now, I just don't know. And so many homeless families are in these motels with children, working just to pay for rent in a hotel. We need to, we're Cobb County, I was born here. We need, and these are Cobb County residents. We need to find another way, like all these buildings that nobody's using or these apartments that are getting renovated. Put two or three families in one room in a three-bedroom, family, a family, a family, work, pay someone, be over their money to get their own place. Because these hotels are $80, $90 per day. And I've tried, that's a hard amount of money to get a day when you don't have it. And, or either apartments that are renovating. Teach people how to save their money, how to pay bills, because these are kids. One girl in the motel is young, she's got a five-month-old and she's pregnant and she don't know where to go get resources, but, so people do what they do to pay their bills, don't know how they're doing it, pay the rent for the room. But there's so many children in these rooms and there's a place that's over there on Delk Road called The Table, where we go and eat free and they give us stuff, help us do pray and do a lot of things. And they give us resources, but the resources are limited because there's so many homeless people out here. And I just pray for them all the time and I pray for myself and I thank you guys for listening. I'm just trying to get help to pay this room rent for the five days through Mus Ministry because that's what my caseworker Savannah Hunter told me they would do when she gave me that coupon. Pay it until the coupon expired or until I find the place. And now that they sent it, gave me to the 28th, they won't pay from the 11th to the 28th. And that's money I could use to find the applications to put in for houses and stuff, but it is a good coupon for those that work. And I thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you. My assistant, Bernessa, will help get your information, excuse me, ma'am. My assistant, Bernessa, will help get your information since you're dealing with a very short timeframe. She's right there in the green.
The next speaker is Ms. Christine Rosman.
Hello, Commissioner.
Good evening.
And Chairwoman. I'm Christine Rosman. I speak on behalf of myself. I'm a resident of Marietta and I plan to speak on SPOLOST, but frankly, after hearing what all the people had to say before me regarding flooding, this is a real issue. It's a huge issue. And if we can't take care of our own county and our own residents and take responsibility instead of hanging them out to dry when they can't, I mean, they're victims. That's a real victim of buying a house and then not having, not being able to rely on your own county to have infrastructure. And infrastructure is really, really important. And I believe that when we start, and then, and then I was kind of like taken aback that it's like, oh my God, we're talking about a $10,000 party. And it's like, where are our priorities? Our priorities should be with the citizens of Cobb County and taking care of their stuff instead of like, you know, hanging out with Chamber of Commerce and, you know, developers and all that stuff. I would think that we should be the priority. And if we are the priority, then I would imagine that SPOLOST, you know, you might want to look at that because this mobility SPOLOST and bringing up our taxes to 8% so that we can kind of be like the rest of metro Atlanta and be like ARC wants us to be and all the other counties want us to be. No, that's not what we want. It might be what you want, but it's not what we want. And we're the, we're paying the foot in the bill, you know? So, and, and plus, to do another SPOLOST, there is a history of SPOLOST with Cobb County. There's a SPOLOST, 2005 SPOLOST, that still isn't, it's still open. So it's like, it was like a four-year SPOLOST and still open. And there's other SPOLOST and it's kind of, it's, it's a little on the loosey-goosey side to me, it seems that way. Because I just have always worked in a business environment where you really have to be accountable for what you do and where you take money out of and where that goes. And there is a lot of looseness that, that does not seem to make sense, totally does not make sense. So it's either like these, these different SPOLOST, there's all of a sudden, there's money and then it, next year it changes and then it's a different name for things. So there's a lot of things that just don't make sense. So I would imagine that we're either over-collecting or under-reporting if all this SPOLOST money, because also if I recall, this latest SPOLOST, 2022 SPOLOST, said, okay, but if we get this other SPOLOST, then some of these things are going to go over into the new SPOLOST. We have no idea what we're, we're getting. All I know is that there are potholes. I know that when I'm driving at night, and of course I'm older, so maybe that's it, it's real hard to see the lines on the road, you know? And if I'm, if I have a hard time, I'm sure somebody that's older than me or has worse vision than me and I wear my glasses at night, is also having a hard time seeing the lines. So, yeah, if we could get back to basics, that would be really nice. So like getting, attending to the potholes. We have all this lost money and I don't know if that's the transportation thing of going ahead and putting in all these sidewalks to nowhere and like really broad sidewalks and it's like, how about taking care of what we have already? Like Sabrina Mau said, you know, like, take care of your own stuff first before we start spending money on things that we don't need to be spending it on. I think that's it. I'm just stunned. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Adrian Burgess.
Hi, good evening. My name is Adrienne Burgess. I'm here because I just, I'm just looking for answers. I went to my rental office back in October for my rent. They gave me numbers to call, people to call. So I called and I got hooked with Georgia Rental Assistance. My caseworker called me December, no, she talked to me through this porter on December the first. The last time I talked to her was the middle of December. When I did send her an email to find out where we was with this case, she told me she was no longer my caseworker. So my question to her was, so who is my caseworker? At the same time, my rental office asking me, what am I going to do about this outstanding bill? Like, as I say, I'm just looking for answers. Like, do I need to move? Do I need to stay? What am I going to do? Yes, that's it. Right, you know? And when I talk to people, when I talk to my rental office, they go, well, we just talked to them last week for a customer and they sent them the check two days later. Well, how did they send them the check two days later when I was talking to you back in November of last year and here we are in February? So how did you get a check for them in two days? And I haven't got a check or no, you know, no nothing in these many months? So then I go to court and their lawyer come and say, well, they say if you give them four hundred, four thousand dollars today, they'll take care of it. So then my question to them was, I give you four thousand today, what's going to go with, what's going to happen with the rest of, what's going on? Oh, they'll talk to you. So then I'm going to be back here again with eviction notice, well, if you're going to have the money. So I just asked, if any of you know anyone at Georgia Assistance, if they could just give me a call, let me know what is my option? Who is handling my case and if I did not fill out the papers right? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker of the evening, Ms. Monica Delancey.
Good evening. Monica Delancey, Riverside Community. I wanted to acknowledge Black History Month and also February is National Parent Leadership Month. This past Monday, Sunday, We Thriving Riverside Rents Association hosted a Resource Connection meeting where we were able to provide resources on how to navigate the resources that's available. And also in attendance at the meeting was Mr. Richard Merritt from Cobb Legal Aid. He was able to offer some suggestions as well. Some of the concerns that some of the residents have been saying is about eviction court. They did attend the court, but there was an announcement made that the Georgia Department of Community Affairs representative was there, but at the same time, they said go up to the fourth floor. And then when they said go up to the fourth floor, they're on the third floor, hearing their name called to be seen from the judge. Then as they tried to navigate this intimidating process with the court system, again, it's only one-sided, there's no representation there for the tenants. It's only there for the landlords or the apartment communities. And there's no clear instructions on, okay, who am I negotiating with? Then they say, okay, well, if you can just come back later or go talk to the management company if you have your rent or you're going to move out. So basically, they want to know clear instructions. If there's going to be a liaison there from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, will they give them time to at least apply for assistance right then before going to see the judge? And then also again, another lady told me that she was there, it was twenty-five people in the courtroom. She counted, twenty-two of the people that was there were black, everybody else were white. So it's like we're going, again, I'm just confused why the population is mostly black and brown communities that's seen being seen in eviction court, okay? Then we have some new owners or management companies or apartment complexes that are bullying tenants who are advocating, pretty much saying that they don't have to give a timeline for when repairs are going to happen. Okay, they're just saying they're going to happen, right? So if you have issues in your apartment, you have, you're seeing broken windows on the property, you're seeing equipment all around, we'll just get to that. But, but we are concerned on, we are going to type of letters when rent is due. So we have commercial properties, which are apartment complexes, which are businesses. I don't know if they're going to be there at your state of the county address, but they're not showing no compassion at all for thirty-five percent of the residents of Cobb County who are renters. I just want to go on record to say that the manager is bragging that she is delivering non-renewal leases on people that have balances on their account, which they know they have balances on their account because of the pandemic. So this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing now. So We Thriving Riverside Rents Association will continue to advocate. I personally would do all I can to protect women and children. Never want to see again a lady telling me that she woke up in the morning, she didn't know who was putting her out. We asked, we said, is it the Sheriff Department or can they hire somebody else? Apparently, they can hire someone else to execute eviction warrants and eviction disposals. But this is a very intimidating process, the whole thing. And we need to be intentional how we're going to address this housing crisis. Because it was wall-to-wall in eviction court when the two bedrooms were eight hundred dollars. When the two bedrooms were seven hundred dollars. So now we know there's rental increases going above a thousand dollars. Just imagine what it's going to look like. So I want to close out tonight with show of trism. If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. Thank you very much.
All right, I believe that concludes our public comment. We are now moving on to appointments. Our first appointment is with District One.
I'd like to approve the reappointment of Tim Richardson to the Housing Authority of Cobb County.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, I said to approve.
So moved to approve, we have to have, it's not a motion, but, so moved as presented, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries five-zero. All right, and the next appointment is for District Three.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Roseanne Hall to the Housing Authority of Cobb County.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, call the question. The motion carries five-zero. I move that we approve Tyronda Mentor to the Housing Authority of Cobb County and she is replacing Ms. Wanda Cunningham, who was honored during today's presentations.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes five-zero. I move that we appoint James Coleman to the Public Library Board of Trustees. He is replacing Ellen Springer. Is there a second? All right, is there any discussion? We'll call the question. And I would like to thank Ms. Springer for her service. And next up, I'll announce Ms. Tasha Settles as my appointment to the Neighborhood Safety Commission and announce David Knight to the Neighborhood Safety Commission. And also announce Laura Gomez as an appointee to the Workforce Development Board. That concludes tonight's appointments. And we now have our Commissioner's Public Address, beginning with Commissioner Gambrell.
The District One 2040 Comprehensive Plan Meeting will be an in-person on Thursday, March third, at the West Cobb Senior Center located at forty-nine fifteen Dallas Highway in Powder Springs. It'll be starting at six P M. We encourage everyone to attend and provide input into this document. And if you have not done so, you can also visit our website and fill out the survey there. Second, our Cobb Parks and our Cobb Senior Services presents their Walk West Cobb. And on Wednesday, being tomorrow, they're going to walk the Mountain to River Trail. Walkers will meet monthly and explore different trails. And again, this trail is at Brown Park, three fifty-eight West Atlanta Street, southeast in Marietta. It is a free event and there is no registration needed. If you have questions, you can call seven seven zero five two eight 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 five for more information. Our Georgia Four H Science Program is presenting the All About Poultry Science on February twenty-fourth at four P M. You can virtually join this U G A Poultry Science Department Professor, Dr. Andrew Benson, to learn all about chickens and some of their other feathery friends. In addition to meeting some live birds, you'll learn about their anatomy and physiology. For further information, you can call, contact Casey Bosman at our U G A Forage Extension Specialist at kcb@ugaredu. And we are in our final week of the thousand minutes, starting this week. You can email Keith Bazonki to get your tracking sheet and let's get those minutes in. Highlights from this month was eighty-four percent of those participating increased their exercise minutes in Week Two as compared to Week One. So congratulations to all of those who have participated. And then today is Tuesday, where the twos line up nicely on February twenty-second of 2022. It is the palindrome because it reads the same forward and backwards, but what it makes especial is the date has all twos. The date is so rare that it won't happen again for another four hundred years when we hit twenty-four twenty-two. So happy Tuesday, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
All right. From the office, hello. Last chance to sign up for the Priority Store. We are rocking and rolling with all of the different groups, HOAs. If you've got, if you basically represent four people, that is sufficient to call yourselves a group. I just don't want it where you're only representing yourself. I have other avenues for that. But this is really your chance to provide your input into what you want me to prioritize for this year. And at the end of the month, I'll be compiling all the feedback and sending those notices out in advance of the first quarterly report town hall. So same as we did last year, but this is, this is the last time that I'll be able to say it at this meeting. Sign up for the tour stop. We also have a Senior Mental Health Town Hall coming up. So my office is collaborating with Cobb Collaborative and Cobb Senior Services to host the Senior Mental Health Town Hall next month for seniors and their caregivers. The event will start at noon with a tabling event for organizations that provide mental health resources in Cobb. The second portion of the event will be a panel discussion at one P M, Thursday, March tenth. It will be held at the Senior Wellness Center located at eleven fifty Powder Springs Street, Marietta. Thank you, Commissioner Gambrell. Experts on the panel include our very own Dr. Jatun Gibson, Director of Cobb Senior Services, Laura Seeg Albert, Clinical Director at Mindful Transitions, Wellstar Gerontologist, Dawn Reed, founder of Aloha to Aging, and register at the Q R link right here. Hopefully, my intro was long enough for you to capture that. Next. Flooding aftermath follow-up. Yes, you are hearing all of the stories from around the county, certainly from District Two with the September seventh flooding, but we do know that this is not something that only impacts District Two. And so after a couple of town halls, been able to pull in a lot of community input, look at some of the options that we can take as a county and have some wonderful conversations. So this aftermath follow-up is really a brief presentation of options that we can take as a community to curb this issue holistically. It is a comprehensive list. Some of the things, I think we can move on sooner rather than later. Some of the things are, will take time to implement, but it is having that broader strategic view of how we can address stormwater from a systemic approach. And certainly, everyone's invited to attend. There will be Q and A portion. It will be virtual, simply because I wanted to make sure we weren't delaying the date too far out. I am trying to do some of these things in advance of the rainy season, as you heard from some of the speakers as well. So yes, thank you. Also had the lovely opportunity of addressing the Cobb Young Professionals at a nice luncheon and talked about courageous leadership. They were absolutely fantastic, tons of questions. I think I gave straight answers for everything. And the reviews were that it was enjoyable, so I will take that. And it was, just really appreciate this group of future leaders. Many of them are already leaders in our community and I'm hoping that some of them follow up and get plugged into some of the activities that we do here at the county. Community updates. A R P Tax Aid, do you need help with preparing for the tax season? A R P Tax Aid volunteers will be providing free tax preparation assistance at three Cobb County Public Libraries, East Cobb Library, Mountain View Regional Library, and Switzer. All appointments must be made in advance. Tax aides will not service walk-in patrons on the same day. Information on days and times of registration can be found at the Q R code or at cobbcounty.org/library. Next. County awarded the Share the Care Grant. Cobb Senior Services is launching a new financial assistance program for Cobb County residents aged sixty and older, thanks to a grant from the A R C, the Atlanta Regional Commission. The Share the Care program can aid with prescriptions, medical supplies, hearing, dental, and vision services for eligible residents living with Alzheimer's or other dementia, such as ALS, multiple sclerosis, or other neurological conditions. S T C will provide limited financial assistance with vouchers up to two thousand dollars based on requested services. Visit the Q R code link or cobbcounty.org-public-services to see if you are eligible. That concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell?
Yes, thank you. Last Thursday, I was honored to be a part of the Georgia National Guard Ceremony in honor of Black History Month. The keynote speaker was Colonel Theodore R. Scott III, Regimental Commander of the Georgia Army National Guard's one hundred and twenty-second Regional Training Institute, R T I. Colonel Scott entered the Georgia Army National Guard in nineteen eighty-six. He commissioned as a second lieutenant in August of nineteen seventy-seven after completing Officer Candidate School. And he is a Senior Military Intelligence Officer in the Georgia Army National Guard with a long and distinguished career of thirty-five years of service. He was a dynamite speaker and he talked about mentoring. And so I asked him if he would be my mentor after the program. And he agreed, he agreed. He's a very nice soldier. Superior Pets for Patriotic Feds, we're up to two hundred and thirteen pet adoptions. This is a partnership with the Cobb County Animal Shelter and Superior Plumbing for free pet adoptions, dog or cats, from the Cobb County Animal Shelter for veterans. And this happy little guy just found his new family, Mr. Hurst, who served four years in the U S Army and supported this. in the US Army and supported this program by adopting this tan Labrador Retriever. So thank you, Mr. Hurst, and your family. Well, the COVID test kits are in and today I delivered to the City of Marietta 500 test kits for distribution to the residents of the City of Smyrna. Thanks to Cobb EMA, thanks to Cobb Douglas Public Health, and our County Manager for organizing the delivery and distribution. And as you can see here, unloading with me are Mayor Thunder Tomlin, myself.
Kristi.
It's down here. Sorry. Assistant Fire Chief Jeff Guest and Deputy Fire Chief Kristi Malik. They're very excited to get them and I'm sure their residents are ready to pick them up. Our next Coffee with Your Cop in District 3 will be at the Chick-fil-A Lassiter located at 3046 Shalifer Road in Marietta, March 1st, which is a Tuesday from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. So join us and come bring your issues to our Cobb County's finest. Another exciting event coming to the Cobb Civic Center on March 14th from 9:00 to 4:00 PM is the Reefs Across America Mobile Education Exhibit. This is being sponsored by the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation, which will also be present in, inside the Civic Center. The truck will be outside in the parking lot and we'll be giving tours from 9:00 to 4:00. For an added surprise that we just found out about yesterday, the Braves World Series Trophy will also be there on display on March 14th at the Cobb Civic Center inside. So come and get your picture taken with the famous World Series Trophy. And our contact information at the county if you need me.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
And happy 2/22/22. Tuesday.
All right. Now moving on to Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the South Cobb, thank you to the South Cobb Area Council for the invitation to be the keynote speaker for the first meeting on February 16th at the Riverside Epicenter. I shared some wins from 2021 and 2022's outlook on moving onward and deep forward. Chairwoman Cupid, myself, and several other community leaders had the pleasure to judge the Black History Month Spelling Bee Contest this past Saturday. The contestants were fantastic and did a wonderful job tackling challenging words. Over eight students competed. Kudos to Miracle Hurst, the first place winner. Angel Mitchell came in second and Keo Underwood was the third place winner. Thank you to the founder of the Haven of Help, Quintasha Swanson, and to the Cynical Coffee and Bistro in Austell for hosting the event. The Bookworm Bookstore and Rooted Trading Company in Powder Springs is hosting their Second Annual Entrepreneurs' Day on Saturday, February 26th from 11:30 AM to 5:00 PM. This is an opportunity to support a local small business and your support would be appreciated. The Riverside Neighborhood Community Garden. Their vegetables, fruits, and smiling faces waiting for you at the Riverside Neighborhood Community Garden. The garden is a way to not only grow vegetables, but a means to grow the South Cobb community. Stop by the South Cobb Recreational Center at 875 Riverside Parkway, Parkway, Austell to take a tour and see the progress. Board Positions. Are you interested in serving your community? I am seeking people to fill District 4 Advisory Board Positions. Qualifications are required for select board appointments. A list of these qualifications are stipulated in either the Cobb County Code or the Georgia Code. For description of board, for description of board appointments, please visit cobbcounty.org. To apply for a District 4 Board Position, send an email to didra.watts@cobbcounty.org with D4 boards in the subject line. And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
First up, this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we'll have a public policy forum to address how certain policy matters are impacting citizens that are African-American in the county. We encourage everyone to attend and we are great to have a number of representatives from our Cobb County organizations who will be serving on panels and we hope that this is the beginning of discussion about how we can understand disparate impacts on communities of color and particularly our African-American community this Black History Month. As I shared in my opening comments, our COVID rate of transmission is dropping significantly. We are almost below the threshold of high transmission, but we are not there yet. This is a snapshot of the website from the Georgia Department of Public Health and it shows numbers here that again, we are at 243 COVID cases out of 100,000 and we are looking to get below 100. And once we sustain that, I will be more than happy to end the emergency order that's in place. But recognizably, it's currently in place so that we can help keep people safe when they are here in the county and we're doing that again by encouraging people to get vaccinated. The State of the County, as I shared during our meeting, is going to be March 31st, 2022 at Jim Miller Park at 7:00 o'clock PM. I believe this is a great opportunity for us to bring the county together. This has typically been seen as an exclusive event for the business community during the day where residents have had to pay to participate. This year, it'll be free and open to everyone and we'll do it not with our county coffers as that was not supported today, but we can certainly do it in partnership with sponsors that want to see us better come together as a county. I know I certainly do. So those of you who would like to attend and learn more about what we're doing, please hold the date and I will be sending out more information to follow so that you can let us know how we can honor you and your peers during this event. There will be awards that will be provided and also there's opportunity for your organization to be recognized during the State of the County address by you sharing how you're helping to build community here in Cobb. There are four cityhood efforts that are going on in the county and I want to take time to thank our staff that did a stellar job in assessing the feasibility studies that have been moved forward by the proposed cities of East Cobb, Mableton, Lost Mountain, and Vinings. And while we may have more cities in Cobb, the reality is we are still one county and in being responsive to our citizens, our staff is pulled together so that we can help educate our citizens about what cityhood may mean to them, whether or not you live in one of the proposed cities or not. What I learned from attending the presentation that staff had is that we are looking at an annual fiscal impact to the county of $41 million should these move forward and we would have to address this as a county one way or another. Certainly, I'm just sharing with you the fiscal impact. There may be operational impacts as well and you can go on our website, www.cobbcounty.org/cityhood to learn more. This is a dynamic webpage that has been put together by our Communications Director and we are adding FAQs as we receive them. And so if you have questions that you want answered, send them to us. We'll probably post them because if you have that question, it's likely that your neighbor does too. All right, we can go to the next slide. Look, I want to know if somebody has been watching Jeopardy during this meeting.
Give it a second.
Oh, well, we still need to give Raymond Gossett a round of applause. He made Cobb County and Kennesaw State look amazing on the national stage when I saw him up there with these Ivy League schools and Raymond is holding it down, letting them know what's what. And I appreciate him putting Kennesaw State University on the map and also just his representation not only of our county, but Cobb County Government as he works for Cobb County Libraries. He's a fantastic young man. He's met my children because my children are involved with cubing. That's the new term for how you work a Rubik's Cube and Raymond is a cubing champion as well as now a Jeopardy champion. He's second, he may have been second place tonight, but he's first place in our hearts. Yeah. Oh, congratulations, Raymond. Another winner that I'd like to recognize tonight is Ms. Margie Hatfield. She was inducted into the Georgia BMX Hall of Fame for her avid service in running our BMX park, which hosts a national BMX race every year. This year, I had opportunity to see her in action with an overwhelming number of people that came in and took over Powder Springs. And there were people who were racing, young and old. I mean toddlers to people with salt and pepper gray hair racing on this track and it was truly remarkable to see her energy, but to also see the number of families that came together to participate. And so I want to thank you, Margie, for all of your work to make Cobb County shine on the national stage and you being given due honor in being inducted into the Georgia BMX Hall of Fame. So, Ross, thank you. I love this collage. So last night, was it last night, over the weekend, I'm on the phone with my sister watching national news and all of a sudden, I see Cobb County on the screen. And speaking of flooding, there was a program called Hearts of Heroes where they're recognizing first responders and how they respond to national, natural disasters. And I don't know how many of you remember the flooding of our daycare right here in Austell where there were several young kids that were trapped inside of this facility. Cobb County Fire came out and responded and did a stellar job safely removing 27 children and four adult daycare workers, some on foot and some they actually had to remove by boat. And if you look at that center image, you can see the flooding that actually engulfed that facility. I want to thank the firefighters for their stellar job in responding to that issue that day, but to the stellar job they do in responding to needs across the county every day. I also want to thank our staff. Our staff also, you know, participates in heroic efforts every day in keeping this county going and I've had opportunity to see that, particularly as I was ill over the past two to three weeks and have had to rely on people more than I typically do. And with all the things that we have going on, our staff has never missed a beat. We have a retreat that's going to take place tomorrow for our Board of Commissioners. We've seen people step up to make sure that this is going to happen in ways that I would have not anticipated and I thank them because this is what our staff does every day. I had the opportunity, while I was ill, to read through the end-of-year reports of many of our agencies. We really don't know how much our staff does every day to serve our residents, our businesses, and stakeholders and I can assure you that they are committed to excellence in serving. They are committed to responding to every citizen to the best of their ability and also to this board. I want to personally thank you for your service. I know we often don't hear thank you enough, but thank you and appreciate having the pleasure of serving alongside of you. Speaking of serving, some of us attended last week Friday, the memorial service of Chairman Boyce, who we had opportunity to learn more about and this gentleman was truly a servant at heart, not only in serving our country, but serving fellow veterans and helping them get their VA benefits. And as I sat there listening to people recall their experiences with the chairman, it made me realize that once you are a servant of the people, you'll always be a servant of the people and this man never stopped serving. And so I thank him for that example and I thank you for the service of the men and women of Cobb County every day and the women of this board. With that, I hope that all of you have a great evening. With that, I hope that all of you have a great evening.